Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. This is a meeting of the Special Board of Sewer Commissioners. The first item of approval is minutes for August 12th, 2019.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from Monday, August 12th, 2019.
Second.
Okay. Any corrections, additions?
I did not see anything.
There was something on about two-thirds of the way down the first page. That starts, "The State of the Land has made..." And the second sentence of the sentence stands, "That their system..." Looks like there's something missing there.
Oh, yeah, okay. Great. What are we missing?
I think it's supposed to...
Eliza, go ahead.
I think it's supposed to say, "Concerns about their system."
Great.
Okay. Got that correction? Anything else?
No.
Okay. All those in favor with the corrections, syndicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Approval of repair Kubota tractor, Mike?
In your packet you should have had a, what I'm calling, a single source or sole source quote from Kubota or from Townline. It's the nearest Kubota dealer around here to fix the tractor at the wastewater treatment facility. They do pick up and for free they deliver, you know, pick up and bring back. So, the next one, closest one was in Salem, New York, and they don't pick up. So, I'm asking that the board approve that amount so we can repair the tractor down at the sewer plant so it's safe for operations and hopefully will last us well into the future once we make these improvements.
And that amount is $6,355.98?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of generator purchase for the 4A pump station. Mike?
So, this is something that Jeff had talked to me about a while ago, and I actually was able to put it into the budget you guys approved for a standby generator at the pump station. There's a quote there. We asked for three quotes. We only got back one, and Brookfield is the folks that we deal with, and they service all of our generators now, so we're just adding one to their mix. But Jeff's here. I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but... Get an answer on that one.
Yeah, on my description.
Do you want me to get it?
Yeah. So, right now, we don't have a standby generator there. Jeff, why don't you kind of fill in the blanks?
Where is it coming in?
Right now, we've got a tow behind own name generator. We've got to stop at the plant. If power goes out, we've got to stop at the plant, pull down, get that up. For the two of us, it just would make more sense to have a nice new generator there to keep from doing overflow.
Overflow is my concern, and the older generator, we could use that generator at the highway garage as a backup, because that's our backup emergency operation center right now, and that would give us the ability to at least power lights and computer equipment and stuff like that. So, I'm asking the board do this so we can have that standby generator and maybe eliminate the need for emergency and cleanup if should the pump station overflow. It's in the budget to buy the generator and to pour the pad. I put it in there. This has been on, this is for two years that I've been here. Jeff's been bugging me about it, and we were able to get it in the budget last year, so it's something you guys have already put in the budget. So, I'm asking that Brookfield be awarded the bid for the generator.
Got the amount?
Is this the amount right here of the 20?
Twenty, so.
Yeah. She put together?
Yeah, but that was just the...
Does that have the bid amount?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I gotta go with what's on the second page.
Yeah, $20,596 for a 30 kilowatt generator. It's propane.
Then I'll make a motion we approve the bid from Brookfield Service in the amount of $20,596 for a 30 kilowatt Kohler generator for the wastewater treatment facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Update wastewater treatment Route 30 sewer system improvements.
Gentlemen, so tonight you have Wayne Ellis here from Aldrich &amp; Elliott and Jeff from our wastewater treatment facility to talk about the 20-year inspection and hiring engineer support to look at our current facility, things that may need to be upgraded, make recommendations to us, and a couple other things they want to talk about. But I want to, Wayne, do you know everybody pretty much, or?
Yeah, generally, I think, yeah. I've been a couple years since I've been here.
Joe Mark is new to the board.
Hi, Joe.
And Zach Holsworth, I'm not sure if you know Zach.
Yeah.
So, this is kind of the next step for the town here on the wastewater plant. This also includes two or three of the pump stations, some other work in the collection system. Now, what the state requires for the town to use these pumps is you have to go out through a procurement process with consultants engineers. So, about two months ago, the town issued an advertisement, they call it a QBS process, qualifications-based selection process. So, the town went through that to receive solicited responses from consultants engineers. We were selected, so once the consultants selected, what we do is we put a scope of work together, which I'll talk about next year, we put a scope of work together fee that goes into the state, that gets reviewed by them and approved, so that has been done. The first piece of that is the state clean water SRF revolving loan program application, so that's what you have here in front of you. We put together on this what we can, the rest of it, we were able to copy some of the previous projects, and of course, Mike, work, you know, with the staff here to update, you know, from current information on your sewer projects, retirement, all that kind of stuff. So, this application does have to be approved by the select board and signed on the last page. It's also going to be signed by the clerk, and the authorized representative will be right. The amount of the request is for $37,900. The good news is because the town, through this qualification-based selection process, is 50% of its loan subsidies, so the town only has to pay up to half of that amount back as this is already there, so. I can go through the engineering agreement with you at the same time, or do you want to do the application first, or?
Go ahead and do the rest of it.
So, this is a very lengthy document, and I think you've got this in front of you. The state requires that we use this. Majority of this is boilerplate. The reason they do this is they want all the engineers, consultants, working on the same document. It's a little bit hard to get you into the pages here. It's a bit easier when you've got a PDF in front of you. But there's only really two parts in here that are kind of critical importance, so if you go about midway into the document, this is a summary of fees.
Sorry, Wayne. They don't have that document. It was so big, I didn't put it in there, and then they wouldn't even, you know, if you're reading it, you wouldn't even know where you're looking until somebody explained it, so.
So, that's a summary of fees. This is the $37,900, so that's what's referenced in the state revolving loan program, planning loan application. Yeah, the state does review the fees and the scope and all that. And then, in the very, very last part of this, is what we call the scope of services, so this is an exhibit J here. Typically, what happens with the agreement is the authorized representative with science, so when you go through, if you're okay with the planning loan application, you know, as part of that, you would just authorize the authorized representative to sign the engineering agreement if you're okay with that. I'll just quickly go through the scope of services. This is the, what we call the step one, limit engineering. We've got a kickoff meeting. We go through, update existing information. We have quite a bit already in-house from previous projects. We go through all your operating data recently, over the last couple of years, to make sure everything looks okay and consistent with the old design data. As I mentioned, at the request of Jeff and Mike, we do have some time in here for the sewer collection system. We have some field work. There has been some work at the town, there's been recently television inspection on St. Hill Road. We do have, looking at the pump stations, primarily the main and the bombazine. I'll talk about the mission unit when we get done this piece. Majority of the work is going through an updated wastewater treatment facility evaluation. We've got in here looking at alternatives from the priorities for the upgrade. We come up with a proposed project, so that could be a couple different, that could be a combination. You know, that's going to be all part of the discussion, we get to that point. Some of it could be done out of capital. If there's major things like the UV disinfection, a couple other things, the town could choose to use state funding for that, but we'll talk about that when we get to that point. If that's an approach you choose to, by the time we get done here, you know, you've got costs laid out. If you do go with the state funding route, you've got a proposed project with a timeline, you know, what the costs are, you know, what the funding's going to look like, and if you're, you know, you would be set up to go to a bond at that point if you choose to. You know, we're also going to look at the impact of the debt retirement and everything on the sewer rates. Obviously, produce a comprehensive report out of this that has to follow the state guidelines. We've got review meetings throughout the project, which are required, you know, with both the town and the state if we go through this. We do have an environmental report in here that has to be prepared, and if you choose to go this route for some portion of the upgrade, so we've got a lot of assistance involved, so.
We do have the original here, Mike.
Yeah, that only did one because it was so thick, and then there were so many pages that aren't applicable.
Yeah.
I'd rather have Wayne talk to you about the stuff that was applicable because we're in that step one of it.
Sure.
But again, if we, if the town went through this state revolving loan fund, then that's 50%, is forgiven, like we did with the other sewer projects.
And that's moving forward, too, and the engineering through the design phases in line, still qualified for the 50% up to $100,000 for each, for each year.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve signing the agreement on the state revolving loan program and the agreement between the town of Castleton and the engineering services with Aldrich &amp; Elliott?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I'd be interested in knowing where the funding is coming from.
Funding? Where's the funding coming from?
For the planning?
Yeah.
So, that's coming from the state. They used to be called the Facilities Engineering Division. Now, they're a part of, recently is part of the Water Investment Division. The town can secure planning funds at any time, which basically what this is for, for the planning funds, there's no priority list, you can request those funds anyways. These guys have about $100 million parked in there that they're looking to put in the projects all over the state over the next few years. Worst case, if the town did not move forward with anything out of this planning loan, basically what you would do is pay that over five years at zero percent interest, so you would pay half of it up through the 37.9 as a planning loan moving forward if you didn't go to the next phase of the project here. This is set up so that basically, still to town's advantage, you could get 50 cents on the dollar with a subsidy, but what happens is that once this goes into the state, the town gets approved for that planning loan up to the amount of 37.9, and is that we do our work, we send an invoice to the town each month, and then basically the town can get reimbursed for that at the same time through this planning program. So, you don't have to pull this money out of your sewer budget, out of your operating budget. That's the primary objective by the use of these planning funds, so. Does that answer your questions?
I'm not sure I fully get it yet. Our obligation would be for $19,000 if we get this grant.
That's correct.
Where would that $19,000 come from?
Well, right now, between the operating budget, if we did it this year, the operating, we put money in then the operating budget for, I gave you guys a copy of the, I believe, there should be a copy of the, so there's money in the operating budget to pay for it, or if the board chooses to go into the reserve to pay for it, then you could go that route.
Thank you.
If the town moves forward with continuing use of state funding, what happens, Joe, is that it's rolled in as you kind of move forward, so you don't have all these different ones out there at the town. Ultimately, if you go to a bond-like construction, the sum gets rolled in, so you just have one amount up there, so.
Okay. Bob? Zach?
No, I'm all set.
All set. Dick, are you there?
I'm here, right here, everything, I'm good.
10-4.
Speaker's right there.
Any questions, Dick?
Nope, not right now.
Okay. All right. If not, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we've got to sign this, gentlemen. Somewhere?
They have to probably make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to allow me to sign as the representative this, because the whole board doesn't have to sign that one.
You mean this one?
Yeah, the agreement.
Okay. You don't have, we don't have to sign that? Okay.
Make a motion we authorize the town manager to sign the letter of transmittal from Aldrich &amp; Elliott.
Is there a second?
Engineers.
Okay, so the, I'll amend my motion to say the agreement between owner and engineer for professional services. Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No problem. I wasn't sure of that. Think the state will approve that?
I did see where it says, "It can't be filled out in ink, it has to be typed."
I know I did. I wasn't sure. I said to Joe, I wasn't sure.
Then everybody starts doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can cross that one out.
Did you get these, Bob?
I did.
Might be an extra set.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comments.
They're not, they're not done yet.
Yes, Mike?
They want to talk about the mission system.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Wayne. Or Jeff?
So, one of the things, when we were developing a scope of services, Jeff expressed, you know, concerns about the flows coming in at the main pump station, bombazine pump stations. So, we'd like to be able to collect some more data of both of those stations, and what we're kind of looking to do is really get, see how much the pumps are running. You know, for example, if this weather stayed like this, we started to get the rain, we'd like to see how that pump station, the bombazine, as an example, is working each hour and over a day to see how much flow is coming in there. Unfortunately, there isn't an easy way to do it without some automation, you know, communication there, that these guys have to get in their truck and drive up to bombazine every hour and daily, which they don't have the time to do with all the other responsibilities they have. So, what a lot of places are doing is they're putting a, it's called a mission unit, and what that does is just a way of collecting the data and to do is they put this in at each pump station. It's all cell-based, and the data all goes up, it's all web-based, so what's nice about that is Jeff can get to that easily. He can actually send alarms out to these guys that way, too. We can also access the data from our end, so we can kind of see what's happening. So, one of the things is we've got a quote here for the, for the equipment. I'll try to walk through, it's a little bit confusing, but I'll start with the main pump station. So, I'll just say the total of that, the estimate is about $2,200 for just that pump station. That includes about $1,500 for Champlin Associates for the install of the equipment. That also includes, there's an annual fee, which is really the right to use the web-based package and information they have. That's about $350 that has to be paid upfront. The unit itself is about $1,445. There is, you can see, it's called a Vega Plus, which is monitoring, well, that's about $875. That may be something we may not need here, we may not, may be able to delete, something we want to look at a little bit closer. So, generally, you're looking at somewhere between $3,500 and $4,200 for the main pump station, for the equipment here with the install and everything. And the second one is for the bombazine pump station. That one's a little bit more expensive because the, they have to do what enclosure, whereas the main pump station, it could put this inside the existing building, out of bombazine, it needs to be protected in outdoor enclosures, so that adds a little bit of money to the unit itself and the service package with what's needed out there. That one is about $4,500. And then, the same thing with the wet wall monitoring, the Vega Plus, about $875. Hold up, we'll relook at that again and see if we can possibly delete that if it's not needed. They have included the same amount of time for this pump station for install and startup. There's a possibility, if you did both of these at the same time, the guys can come down here, they can do both of them, there's some efficiency there, and hopefully get it all done in one trip. So, it's a good amount of money here, but, you know, we think this is worthwhile moving forward, and it's good information, and also a great, you know, great tool for the operators here, so.
What's the total between the two?
$87.72.
Any, any questions for Wayne regarding the additional equipment for the two pump stations?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I guess, I'm not sure I fully appreciate the benefits of this, but what are they?
Well, we're trying to get more information. Jeff has got concerned about the flows that are coming in each of those pump stations, you know, we think it's really a function of the wet weather conditions. So, what we're trying to do by this information is we can see what's going on there over the next few months, we can go through that data, you know, and see if it's related to stoneout. We can also pull the rainfall data, we'll have that information available, both intensity and daily totals, to see if the flows increase, if you're getting a good amount of rainfall. And then, after that, we may look at this, and there may not be an issue for the main pump station. We may find out that's okay. We may find out there's an issue with the bombazine, and if that's the case, then we can start focusing more on the collection system side and making our way out there, but we don't want to spend a whole bunch of time in the field until we can confirm that water, both of those, that that's a problem and what we think the cause of the higher flows is, so.
So, do I hear you saying that depending on what we learn through this process with these devices, we might make changes to the collection system?
Or do more investigation on the collection system, you have to try to see if we can chase down where the sources of flow are, so.
Thank you.
Jeff, what's the status of the line from the lake that goes into the bombazine pump station?
Status of the line?
Yeah.
Well, the station itself is getting old and worn out, getting a lot of infiltration inside of it, because all that rainwater pours right down, sets in there, you can see it come right in there.
Well, I guess, I guess going back historically, when the bombazine pump station was put in, there wasn't enough flow to activate the pumps, so at some point, a line was put in from the lake, which would activate the pump. Is that line still active, or is it sealed off, or what? Is it still there?
I'll answer that.
Okay. Okay. You see, there was a little flow up there. Now, there's supposedly a lot of flow.
The pump station is probably 25 or 30 years, I've got a guess when it was put in.
It's 72, right in there, Wayne.
There wasn't a lot of connections, and of course, you get into the season, I'm sure back in the early 70s, you know, when they started, and initially, there just wasn't a lot of flow there at the time.
No.
There weren't a whole lot of people connected, and you probably had a lot more seasonal properties at the time, and then over the years, got a lot more year-round properties, and now you've got, the infrastructure up there is now 40-plus years old, so you're getting more of that wet weather, string, this flow in there. We're kind of looking at the bombazine pump station from two parts. This is part of the study that you just authorized, we're going to be looking at addressing age-related needs there, but separately, we want to also get an idea what the flows are coming in there and when, whether they should be there or not. If they shouldn't be there, then we may want to get out of the collection system a little bit more and see where that's coming from.
Is there, is there a relationship between the amount of electricity that's used at the pump station and the flow?
There can be, but that isn't all that accurate, and the problem is, so, and that's a good question, we're in the same boat of, that's the reason why we're kind of recommending this mission unit, because we can pull that up, and we can see what's going on every five or 10 minutes and over an hour. When you're looking at the electricity, you could do that, but somebody's got to be reading the electric meter every hour. We can back into that and estimate runtimes, but again, there's not an easy way to do that without having some kind of device, monitoring device to be able to do that, and that's what we're really looking to do by this mission unit going in, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Zach?
I can think of any.
Joe, you all set? Or not all set?
Well, same old question of where does money come from?
Out of the operating budget.
I do have a question. What is in the reserve for the wastewater treatment facility?
Off the top of my head, it was like...
Like $450,000?
What's that?
$438,000? Okay.
Okay. We ready for a motion? Someone like to make a motion?
Zach, did you get the total amount?
Yeah, I've got it right here. I'll make a motion we approve the quote for Champlin Associates in the amount of $8,770.14 for, what do they call it, Wayne?
Mission units.
Mission units. Okay. Okay. Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Are you aye, Dick? You're aye. Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Public comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anything else, Wayne or Jeff? All set. You guys are all set. Anything else on public comments on this? If not, Sewer Commission, that's us, guys. Comments and concerns? Do we have any? Thank you.
Anybody else have any? Okay. That being said, motion is in order to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks, Wayne, Jeff. Begin the second meeting, which is a notice of public meeting, Town of Castleton, 6:30 p.m. Monday, February 24th, 2020, at the town office. It's discussion, informational meeting to help voters better understand Article 57, which will be voted on next Tuesday, March 3rd, which reads as follows, "Shell the Town of Castle and withdraw from the Rutland County Solid Waste District and take the necessary steps to join the Solid Waste Alliance Communities." I'd like to add one item here that we, that's neglected, and that is that the board instructed the town manager, Mike, to do his analysis of the advantages and disadvantages of belonging to either the Solid Waste District or to SWAC, and I'd like to add that in after the Rutland County Solid Waste District representatives makes his presentation. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like some discussion on it. You asked the town manager when to do this?
We did it at the last meeting.
Two weeks ago.
That's right.
And this was just in my box today.
Mine, too.
Just like the last time.
Uh-huh.
I didn't even get the analysis the last time, when we did this a year ago, after the meeting.
Okay.
So, I'm going to object to this right now.
Okay. Your objection.
This is not, this is not fair, Joe.
Your objection is noted.
I worked on it as fast as I could.
Mike, you knew about this two weeks ago.
All right, gentlemen, listen, you...
I'm stating the fact.
Time out. You address your comments to the chair, please, both of you.
I was addressing to you, Mr. Joe.
Okay. And you, you heard, you heard the result, and you, your objections are noted, they are in the record. they are in the record. Are there any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. But it be noted that Bob Spalding votes nay. Okay, since this was brought to the attention through a petition, first group up is the Solid Waste Alliance Committee Communities, SWAC. Is there someone here representing SWAC? Seeing none? Hearing none? I'll wait again. Yes, there's no one here representing SWAC. Okay, if not, we'll then move on to the Rutland County Solid Waste District, Representative Tim Gilbert, who is the representative from Castleton, and Bob Spalding is the alternate. Tim, you have the floor.
Okay. I'm calling, yeah, Solid Waste District has a budget of, this past year, I'm speaking with the numbers, two thousand, pardon, I'm sorry, two million eighty-five thousand, from which they get tipping fees, which is a surcharge, charge to hauler, bringing trash from district town, nineteen dollars ninety-seven cents of on it. They get eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in budget for that. That leaves one million two hundred and forty-seven thousand that we generate from grants and fees at the Gleason Road Transfer Station, which the... Those fees are used for many programs, there's outreach programs to our businesses and schools, there's community events, some of which will be coming up soon concerning recycling, notification new laws and so on, and a major part of it also issues for household hazardous waste, which we take from members of district towns that are... Just about everything I believe. Current assets of Rutland County Solid Waste District is two point two million dollars. Of that, Castleton owns, say, their percentage, which, we're nine point five percent of their district, they own a hundred and ninety thousand dollar worth of assets. That includes a recycling center, we call it the Merck Materials Processing Center or something like that, facility, which is, just as you come in Rutland, across from the Village Snack Bar across the tracks there, around a long-time old Vicom plant, the district owns that particular building, it runs their recycling center, they have a lot of capital and maybe recycling equipment in there. Rutland County Solid Waste District also has a unbalance, which, I believe, Castleton just received a check of fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars or so, which were excess money from the unbalance, but we currently have three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the unbalance, of which a hundred and fifty-two thousand is unassigned, some of the other money is for, we have some site work, as you're probably familiar with, there's runoff issues and so on, that A and R is anxious for aggressive, we have to buy a new quarter, five thousand dollars, but we do have the cash for those things. Rutland County Solid Waste District, that money that was returned, returned to all the towns, based on the capita basis, a hundred and fifty thousand. We also have, in addition to that, over three hundred thousand dollars, right now, we have over ninety-four thousand dollars that are overused by trash haulers, which are, we've started a more aggressive program with those trash haulers, and I expect that that money will come in as time goes on. As far as the surplus goes, I anticipate we'll probably, more of that money, in the past five years, we've paid about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two scales and some site work at both the Gleason Road and the Recycling Center. Did have to borrow fifty thousand, pay back within the year, so, cash flow seems to be pretty steady. Twenty-twenty-one, Rutland County Solid Waste District, completed payments on the materials reprocessing facility, the old Vicom plant, and after that, we have a lease agreement with Casellas to use that property from us for five thousand ninety dollars per month, which is sixty-one thousand dollars a year, so, additional revenue coming in. In twenty-twenty-five, the Gleason Road Transfer Station will be paid off, we anticipated that, probably, leased their current spot, that'll be additional revenue, so, the future looks solid. The current surplus comes from, it's an expected operating cost, increasing trash and increase in CMD, there's been quite a bit of building going on, or a plant, Killington's got a lot of construction going on, and both things generate more CMD, and there seems to be an uptick in visitors in that area and in the area in general, which increases the fees as far as the tipping fees go. Castleton's fee to the district town, I think the select player, Mr. Jones, has quoted that nineteen thousand dollars. This past year, we returned fourteen of that, so, five thousand dollars, and past year, but in general, that nineteen thousand dollars is received from the transfer station and both of the district and those tipping fees. Do I have any questions?
All right, we'll come back to questions in a second, everybody, and then you can ask questions to whoever you want. Mike, we'll move on to you with your report, your analysis.
Thank you. So, there's a slideshow here, and the purpose is, was to, this brief is to conduct an accurate, is to provide accurate data to the Town of Castleton voters on whether withdrawing from the Rutland County Solid Waste District and enter into an agreement with the Solid Waste Alliance Communities actually benefits the Town of Castleton residents, and that's Article fifty-seven on the March ballot. So, I started off with direct cost comparisons between the Rutland County Solid Waste District and the Solid Waste Alliance Communities, first looking at the surcharge fee of nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents versus the per capita charge of SWAC of four dollars and fifty-one cents per individual, and they used the two thousand and ten census population data. So, for the Town of Castle, and that was four thousand, seven hundred and seventeen people. So, looking at this under the total surcharges paid to the Rutland County Solid Waste District that the Town of Castleton paid out of our budget was twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and under direct costs, Castle pays eighty percent, Hubbard pays twenty percent, they pay thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thirty-six hundred.
Did I say thousand?
Yeah, thirty-six hundred.
No. Let me, let me, can you hold the question?
Yeah, okay.
And then, the direct cost for SWAC, the four fifty-one per person, comes out to be twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, so, if, the difference between the SWAC surcharges and the Rutland County Solid Waste, or, the Rutland County Solid Waste surcharges and the SWAC per capita was two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. My estimate there was, that's, we would pay that much more to switch to SWAC, under direct cost only. And what I mean by direct cost was the transfer station. So, we turn the page under facts, some of these have already been said, about the surcharge nineteen ninety-seven, that Rutland County Solid Waste gave a Town of Castle and back a budget surplus of fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars, the check was actually dated twenty-nine January of two thousand and twenty. So, if Hubbard, what, this is, if Hubbard had to pay a per capita fee, their census data was seven hundred and six people in two thousand and ten, if they had to pay a direct per capita fee to SWAC, that would be three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and six cents, and their current assessment, and I gave that to you in your packet, under the twenty percent, was thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. On the next page, under services comparison, so I looked at both of them and said, and I talked to Pam Clapp from SWAC, and asked her, I wrote, I wrote her the question, so she wrote back to me, so I had them in writing, and as well as several conversations with her over the last couple of weeks, is that household hazardous waste, under Rutland County Solid Waste, it's included in our surcharge cost, there is no additional fees for that, but under SWAC, that's not covered under the per capita cost, so it's an additional cost above and beyond the per capita. And it's, it was hard to nail down a number, she gave me eleven thousand dollars as a, her estimate of what it costs per one event, they have two scheduled in the area in two thousand and twenty, one is in Rutland Town and the other is in Fairhaven, so, our members would have to go to, excuse me, those two towns, to, to drop off their household hazardous waste, and the costs associated with that, if we joined SWAC, we'd be the eleventh community to join, we'd be the largest of all the eleven, so, her numbers to me was, that per capita ratio would be, we'd be twenty-five point two four percent of all, of the SWAC per capita, so, twenty-five point two four percent of the eleven thousand dollars is two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, that's for one day, there's two, so our total additional cost would be five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars for those two household hazardous waste days. Just the difference between SWAC and Rutland County Solid Waste is, there's three scheduled in town this year with Rutland County Solid Waste, and SWAC has two scheduled in the community, and both, none of them are at Castleton. So, I added the two numbers together, and the total with the per capita fee and the additional five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars would be twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is seven thousand, seven hundred and thirteen more than the surcharge, direct surcharge fees to the Rutland County Solid Waste District. I went into some slides on hazardous waste, what Pam was able to tell me was, again, eleven thousand dollars was the average cost for an event, but she said there is no cost containment on the event, it depends on what people bring in, and the quantity of what people bring in. There are some things that are much more expensive to get rid of than others, and she also said that they do encourage patrons of the transfer station to bring items such as batteries, used motor oil, light bulbs and paint to businesses around the community who accept it for free, and that would reduce the cost of the household hazardous waste day. Again, it's, it's just a level, it's a level of convenience, whether people think that's good or bad, that might, just to point out the two, the differences. Administrative costs, Rutland County Solid Waste, under the surcharge that we pay, they do the recertification, they do quarterly reports, they include us in the Solid Waste Invitation Plan, they provide onsite technical assistance, which we did use a couple times during the past year when we had some violations, and they came over, it was Jim McGorman and Dean Wilson, who came over and helped us work through that, wrote letters to the state in our behalf, and helped us get it back on track, and they also provide education and training opportunities. Under SWAC, what's covered under the per capita fees is the SWIP itself, the Solid Waste Invitation Plan, the quarterly reports Pam said she would do if the town asked her to, but we'd have to provide all the data, so that means everything that Rutland County Solid Waste does now, and gathering all the information for the report, we'd have to do in-house. And then services and fees that require additional money is the transfer station recertification, we don't need to do one for eight years, just transparency, but there would be a cost if they had to do that. On recycling, we're, we're not doing so well over recycling overall, it, it is a, we're not, we're, we're taking into our revenue a certain amount, we're projecting, we're not reaching that, and Tim, I'm not sure if you said it, I wasn't here if you said it or not, but, right now, communities are losing money on recycling. It's costing more in processing fees than it is in commodity fees, so, under cost containment, we're already looking at recycling as something that we need to take a deeper look at because we're losing money on it. Private haulers, so, the, I spoke to two private haulers, and Tim spoke to one, and three of the four of those larger private haulers in the district said that they are not going to reduce their fees if they no longer had to pay the surcharge. I asked them that specifically, claims have been made that they reduced their fees if they no longer had to pay it, and so far, of the three that I've talked to, or two I've talked to, and one, Tim, had said they would not.
Can we, can we stop right there, Mike? Who were the private haulers you spoke to?
I spoke to Sean Sequin, Ed Bolch, and Tim spoke with Casellas.
Okay, Bob, okay to go ahead?
Well, it's, it's okay for now. We spoke with Casellas two years ago.
Okay.
Randy, Randy DePron said that he would reduce his rates.
And that's possible, Bob, I just, I didn't talk to him, so...
I spoke with Randy this past summer, he told me they did an analysis, and they figured that it cost them about seven dollars a year for customers, and they would not change any of these.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Business suicide.
That was in July.
Okay.
One private hauler used our transfer station, he pays one permit fee, and he collects, not just in Castle, but he said about two hundred customers. There are currently seven hundred and forty-seven Castleton Transfer Station first permit holders. Trash fax, the number of tons that are, is collected by these private haulers is an estimated amount, I talked to Tim today, and I talked to Mark Shea over at Rutland County Solid Waste, and there is no, there is no, there's no accurate figure, there is no, like, set figure, like, they don't weigh every bag and say, this much came from Castleton, this much came from wherever, so, it is a formula that they use, and I'm not going to pretend that I figured out that formula over a ten-minute conversation today. So, I said, it's less expensive to pay a one-time permit fee and pay as you go at the transfer station than use a private hauler to produce, if you produce, you know, small amounts of trash per week, because our, if you're paying by the bag, we're still charging a dollar per bag, and most of the private haulers are charging thirty-five to, or up, so if you calculate that out and say, I bring three bags per week to the transfer station, it's less than what you pay for a private hauler. If the per capita fee in the household hazardous waste collections being twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven, if my numbers are correct, the question is, how does that get billed back out to the residents? Is that in our, in taxes, is it a fee? That's something to be thinking about if, if you chose to go with SWAC. I divided the twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven by seven hundred and forty-seven permit holders, and that's thirty-five dollars and ninety-five cents annually per, per each user, if that was just showing what, what that cost would be.
Can I stop again and ask a question? Once again, Mike, you're just talking about the transfer station.
Correct.
It's only half the town.
Direct cost.
SWAC's charge per capita includes the whole town.
Right.
So, if you don't include the whole town, you know, all your other figures, this is not worth the papers written on, I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
SWAC covers the whole town, Mike.
Yep.
And then you, over here, and you say, oh, just the transfer station.
I just said direct cost.
You can't, yeah, you can't, you can't put those together.
Okay. You made your point. Go ahead, Mike.
If Castle, so, if Castle and joins SWAC, we, again, I said, we'd be the largest contributing town right off the bat, paying twenty-five point two four percent of the bills of household hazardous waste and everything else that has a fee. So, in, SWAC per capita fee is four dollars and fifty-one cents in two thousand and twenty, that's an increase of point two, that's twenty-six cents per resident over the last year's fee that they were charging, and Rutland County Solid Waste surcharge did not change, just a comparison. Talked about, there's two days, SWAC, there's no alternative, under SWAC, if I understand this correctly, for patrons that have a Castle and permit, so if they wanted to use Rutland County Solid Waste, I believe, what I was told, that they would have to pay the forty-dollar user fee if they wanted to use the Gleason Road facility.
SWAC residents, SWAC, and for Rutland County Solid Waste District members, it's ten dollars per...
The Castle said not all residents use the transfer station, if voters choose to withdraw from the Rutland County Solid Waste District, all the voters are making decisions for just those that use it. So, if you have, if you have a permit in Castle, and you can use... So, if you have, if you have a permit in Castle and you can use the Gleason Road facility, especially with household hazardous waste, the facility's open six days per week. And then, Tim, you spoke to this, and so I don't really want to dive into it, but just a statement would be, Castle and shares in the value of the Rutland County Solid Waste District, and if we withdraw, we'd be walking away from any equity that the town has already, has in their properties and investments.
Mr. Chairman?
Joe?
I see that we have about three minutes before our scheduled adjournment. I wonder if we could ask manager...
Sounds good to me, Joe.
So, the conclusion, I said, based on all the data available, if the town were to draw from the Rutland County Solid Waste District and join SWAC, it would cost the town 7,713 more per year to be a member of SWAC with a reduction in services to patrons, additional administrative costs, and 100% loss of investment capital in the Rutland County Solid Waste District. That completes my information.
Okay, board, okay, Tim.
One thing on the household hazardous waste, that cost was based on $11,000, which is the average cost per pickup. If Castleton were to join with 25% more people, one would expect that the household hazardous waste cost would go up 25%, I think, which would actually bring our cost up to about $7,000, therefore making a SWAC membership a little over $28,000. I don't think we could expect that we would join the SWAC and not have household hazardous waste increase.
Questions from the board?
It will, it will increase, I want to speak to that, Mr. President. It will increase if you have that many more people paying for it.
Okay.
Rutland Town's an equal town, and they pay $3,300 for two events.
Okay.
It's not $11,000 per event, Mike.
That's what Pam, that's what Pam told me.
That's incorrect.
No, that's for the whole SWAC he's talking about, not just Rutland Town.
For the whole SWAC, but it's for two events, it's not $11,000 per event.
That's not what she told me.
That's what she said.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
I have a lot, but go ahead, Joe.
Well, I'd like to address, I'm a bit, three, four minutes ago when you said, you made a point about SWAC covers the whole town, and I recognize that that's the case. For me, the issue comes down to what are our obligations as the Castle and the like. And I view this as I would view a decision made by a family to send their children to private schools. The town provides public schools, they have every right to, they have a private school, but it's not our obligation as select board members to be concerned about that. And this is analogous, I mean, here we have a publicly provided service and some people for convenience prefer to hire a private hauler. I think that's great, that's fine, I'm glad people can have that business and citizens can have that option, but I don't think it should factor into the decision-making.
Zach?
No, I agree that it is the select board's responsibility to take care of the taxpayers first and then everybody else second.
Okay. Dick, do you have anything?
I can't speak much beyond what Joe said. I do agree that our primary responsibility is to the taxpayer and that we have to give that primary consideration. That's all I got right now.
Okay. Back to you, Bob.
The taxpayer with SWAC, taxpayer, when we say taxpayer is the town, is the whole town.
Mm-hmm.
And the taxpayers pay the $21,000, SWAC per capita. If you're going to say that, the district surcharge gets charged to every resident in town, every taxpayer in town and Castleton University. Castleton University pays an extra $3,000, $3,500 extra on their tax on their trash bill every year because this town belongs to Rutland County Solid Waste. Total surcharges for the town, and I did a little analysis of myself, the major haulers, they average 932 tons over the 2016, 2017, 2018. You add that to the 1,185 tons of the transfer station, you're up over 2,100 tons.
Yep.
Equals $42,000, that's what we're paying Rutland County Solid Waste District. That's what the whole town is paying to Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Okay.
And their surcharges.
But again...
So, if you're going to use, say apples to apples, $42,000 is paying to the Rutland County Solid Waste District, or over here, you'd only pay $21,000 for SWAC.
But we just...
It's a $20,000 difference.
But we just determined that three private haulers have said that they will not adjust their cost, adjust their savings and give it back, give the savings back to the customers, their customers.
That's just the opposite of what they said a year ago.
I'm just, right.
It'd be business suicide if they didn't reduce their rates. They're going to still charge, they're going to still charge the university $3,000 extra, even though they don't have to pay that tax.
Okay, can I say something? How would it be business suicide if all of the, or the major private haulers aren't? All right, do you see what I'm saying? If all of them don't adjust their, their prices, how is that business suicide?
You're justifying paying an extra $20,000 by that, Zach? That's not acceptable.
$20,000 that the customers will not get back, Bob? That's what we're trying to tell you.
Just on the word, that doesn't justify, Zach.
Okay, okay, gentlemen, you made, you made your point, both of you made your points.
I want to ask, I'm not done yet, Jim.
I didn't, I didn't ask if you were done.
I want to ask Mr. Gilbert, when you said that the Solid Waste District owns the MRR, that's not correct. You're paying back Mr. Casillas for that MRR, so you don't own it yet.
Do you own a house if you still have a mortgage on it?
Not clear entry, no, no.
Well, in 2021, that mortgage would be paid off.
Okay, then that would, then then the Rutland County Solid Waste District will own it.
We own most of it. I'm not sure which part we own. Bob, I question your numbers, if I may. I question your numbers, two years ago, I sat in here in January and you had a big chart that you reported we would save $108,000 if we left the district. Two months later, at voting day, you had a sign out front, I think it was $50,000 we were going to save. Last year, I believe you were touting $32,000, and this year you're saying 15,000 to 17,000 on your sign.
You probably got some accurate numbers.
These numbers are, I don't know how we can, how you can be $93,000 difference when you're sure, each time you're sure of your numbers, each time, you're dispassionate about those numbers and they've been absolutely...
Okay.
Good enough, I just...
You go ahead, Bob.
I just, 2017, Rutland County Solid Waste District received $718,000 from their 17-member towns. In 2018, they received over $856,000 from their 17-member towns. 2019 is up to $895,000 that they received in district surcharge from their 17-member towns. Castleton is the second largest town of those 17. Those same 17 towns belonged to the SWAC, they were paid in total SWAC every year of $1,000, $200,000. So, savings of $518,000 in 2017, savings of six, over $656,000 in 2018, and savings of over $695,000 in 2019. But you still contend that the Rutland County Solid Waste District is a cheaper option.
Yes, sir, and you still contend that your numbers are good when you're $93,000 off.
I'm not going to get into that, the numbers are what they are.
Okay, is there anything new? Anything new, gentlemen?
I want to know where this, this paperwork came from, it was in my box.
I provided that to the H member, I got that from Mark Shea, I asked him to, this is one of the reasons why I was waiting a long time for some of this data, was what is the current amounts owed and what would the town have to pay within that one-year period if the town voted to leave the Rutland County Solid Waste District? What they would pay to SWAC? And the number was, I think, $16,042, I believe.
You mean...
Number six on that thing, Bob.
Yeah, it is.
Wait a minute, do you mean the town of Castleton would have to pay over $16,000 to withdraw from the Rutland County Solid Waste District? Is that what you're saying?
To pay the bills of any outstanding leases.
Okay.
But we get that money back. The longer we stay in the Solid Waste District, you don't get that money back, the money you pay every year. Can I get a copy of this, Mike, without this yellow sticky over on it?
That's what I got, that's, I got that...
Where'd you get this from?
I got it from Mark.
From Mark?
Yeah.
So, Tim?
I met with Mark today and I looked over the formation agreement for the Rutland County Solid Waste District, and no place in there does it say that a withdrawing town will get any of that money back that they paid, I don't believe that to be true at all. I know if I was sitting on the board and another town withdrew...
Right here.
That's a letter from our previous...
From you guys.
From our previous manager, I'm telling you, that was an error. I believe that there's no place in there that says the town will get any money back, and I don't think it's true at all.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Joe?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a motion.
Are we going to, I know we're pushing the clock here on our regular meeting, are we going to allow questions or comments from the audience, or are we going to, you said you have a motion? What do you want to do, gentlemen?
We could do questions and comments from the audience after we make the motion during the discussion part, we can...
Okay, is that agreeable to you, Joe?
Yes, I mean, it's obvious we have about a dozen people here.
Yep.
And I don't know how many people will watch this, it's a lot, but my fear is that of the, whatever it is, who are likely to vote next Tuesday, that most will be poorly informed about this issue. It's taken us a lot of time to try to, to think about it. I have the benefit, as you all did, of having participated in a very similar discussion last March, with the issue of the underwriting of the members is largely different. I think it would be beneficial to the voters if the board was prepared to make a recommendation on their vote on Tuesday, and I would like to move that we advise the voters to reject Article 57.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Board discussion?
This might be a court discussion.
Okay, no board discussion? We've pretty much, we've pretty much discussed it, haven't we?
You guys are comfortable getting this at the last 11th hour.
We've had those numbers for a year, Bob.
No, we haven't, Zach.
Okay, all right, now, since there's no other...
I have a, one more comment, Jim.
Go ahead.
It's, I'm very discouraged in you, Mr. Town Manager. I was in the business for 35 years, not once did you pick up the phone a year ago and check with me, say, what's your opinion, Bob? What's your, what's your analysis on this?
This is, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you right there, this is not the place, nor the time, to make personal attacks on any member of the staff.
Making a personal attack, just make a comment, Jim.
You made a, okay, let's leave it at that. All right, any other comments or questions from the board? If not, who's the first citizen? Dan?
Dan Duescher, I'm 226, 30 miles. Question for Bob, if this is such a good thing, why is there not a representative from SWAC here, and why are you representing?
Because she lives in Arizona.
It seems like a very big conflict to interest me. You're a select board member, not a trash holler.
I'm also a taxpayer in town.
So am I.
Okay.
I have a right to my opinion.
The people that don't use the transfer station made that right on their own, exactly the same as the schools, that was a very good comparison. Those people choose to have a trash holler come, taxpayers that use this facility, why is there an increase? You're, you're supposed to be looking out for the taxpayer, not SWAC, not...
Okay, you, you, you answered the question, he answered, you answered it. We're moving on to someone else.
That's not right. Don't get to respond to that, gentlemen.
We're moving on to someone else. Is there someone else who'd like to make a comment or ask a question? Janet?
I was going to make mine really quick. Since last year, I was one of the individuals that worked with Pam for to contradict some of the numbers that were in the report that Mr. O'Gorman had presented to the board. I think that, I agree with Joe Marks in part, you know, if you want to task people to be educated, they need to see this information fairly in time so they can decide to do the research. I think making a motion and saying, well, we don't agree with it, is not giving the opportunity for the residents and the taxpayers of Castleton to look at the information. I mean, the ballot says, do you want to do this or do you not want to do this? I would say from my own experience, one thing with being on the planning commission, being a chair, is that you have to give the public an opportunity to attend meetings, an opportunity to look at information, an opportunity to ask questions. So, you guys have already kind of made that decision without any of the taxpayers looking at this information, and I, and I know the hard work you put into it, Mike, I mean, I know, I did it a year ago, it's hours of my life I will never get back, but I'm just putting it out there that it just kind of seems like you just kind of put it out there, put that cart before the horse, just my...
Could I just comment on that? The reason this is on the ballot is not something that was proposed by the select board.
I understand that.
It was once again, something that was presented by petition with a legal number of voters signing the petition. As soon as it became a legal item and the board voted to put it on the ballot, which we had to do, we immediately scheduled a hearing informational meeting as best we could. Also, it will come up at the informational meeting next Monday night, and I'm sure there will be more discussion again on it. So, I'm not saying we weren't, we weren't doing what we should do, but we're trying, we tried to do what we felt we could do, given the limited amount of time that we had.
Understandably, but maybe this could go online?
That's why we requested that this be, that this be televised tonight.
Well, not everybody watches, a lot of people are on their computer and they're looking at anything.
Okay, other citizens who have comments or questions? Chief, do you have a question? Not at all. Thank you, chief. Yeah.
Michael Finnegan?
Mr. Finnegan?
Yes.
I'm not going to refer you tonight, tonight as lieutenant.
Thank you. Lots of numbers, lots of different facts, hearing numbers from, state of Rutland County Solid Waste, numbers here, numbers there, signs around town, get the facts, save money, it's going to cost more money, it's really difficult for people to make an informed choice. I think the numbers that Mike got spoke to me, but SWAC, you got stuff in writing from SWAC that back up your numbers?
Yes.
You're speaking to folks from Rutland County Solid Waste that back up the numbers?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think the numbers in this handout you've given us is accurate. Based on this, it's going to cost the town more to leave Rutland County Solid Waste than go to SWAC. Okay, I'm not sure, and I appreciate Mr. Spalding's passion for this, but I'm not quite sure what your intent is. Is this to save the townspeople money? Is this something you have against Rutland County Solid Waste? Are you living debt against Rutland County Solid Waste? That's what this smells like, I've got to be honest.
Excuse me, Mr. Finnegan, I was in the business for 35 years.
I understand that.
I know more about Rutland County Solid Waste District and SWAC than anybody in this room. And I have no financial gain, I'm not in the trash business anymore. It's for the taxpayers. We're handing the Rutland County Solid Waste District over $40,000 in surcharges. Makes no difference, Mr. Mark, whether you have a private hauler pick it up, or you take it to the transfer station, or you take it to the transfer station in Rutland, that district's surcharge makes no difference. It's just a facilitator.
Okay. Go ahead, finish up.
Down in Castleton is just a facilitator, it's a tax, it's a trash tax. You collect it through the tipping fees, Mike. Town pays that to the Solid Waste District. The hauler collects the tipping fees, the surcharge included in it, he pays it to the Rutland County Solid Waste District. It doesn't matter if you have a private hauler picking it up, or you take it to the transfer station, the surcharge is paid.
Okay, you also? Okay, Tim, last question.
Before the support talks a little bit about how they would accept these fees, you have to pay the $14,000, $28,000 to join when you include the household hazardous waste, because that comes up to about a penny on our tax rate, and I think the taxpayers should know that, I think that would be about $42, maybe, I hate to public that, but $42 per 100,000. Our large landowners and businesses would have to pay a few hundred dollars for this, I believe, and I don't think that they would like that.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to object.
Okay, you're, you're objecting to it? Okay, good.
Absolutely.
You're objecting, okay. All right, with that, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion to recommend to the voters that the town of Castleton remain in the Rutland County Solid Waste District, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Nay.
Nay? Okay, four to one. Okay, with that, could complete the hearing? Yes, Joe?
Can I just... Can I just make one last short comment? I agree with Janet's suggestion. I think this was what she was suggesting, that we put some materials online. And I would suggest that should include your analysis, Mike, that Bob wants to submit something that represents his point of view. That should also provide it to the taxpayers online.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we do that, is that something that you want done in the next couple of days? Because Bob and I'll have to get together to... Or you want separately or individually? Or together or individually?
What's your suggestion, Joe?
I'm suggesting that as quickly as you can, you put your materials in as soon as you get something from Bob. Put your materials on the town website.
Okay. That take care of it? Okay. Motion is ordered to adjourn this hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, make the motion first.
Yeah.
You made the motion, okay. Motion to adjourn to the second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, approve the agenda. Any corrections? Additions, subtractions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, the agenda's approved. Minutes for approval, February 10th, 2020.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented from February 10th.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. Discussion?
Yeah, I found one error. Under warrants for approval. First one, I did not make the motion. Mr. Combs made the motion.
Is that on page you're on?
Oh, I'm sorry, page four at the bottom, under warrants. First one?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Combs made a motion to approve, check warrant number 0210. And I seconded.
Okay, anything else, that? Okay, Bob? Dick, you have anything on the minutes?
You're all set.
You're all set. Joe?
No, we're good.
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay. All those in favor with the correction, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Oh, that one passed unanimously. Okay. Citizens' comments. Which one of you ladies would like to be first?
I'd love to be first.
Okay. Janet Curry?
I just wanted to let the board know that the planning commission, tomorrow night at 6:30, is going to be having a meeting with Barbara Pulling from Rutland Mutual Planning Commission to go over the solar grid area. We're going to be cooperating in the enhanced energy plan. Just know, just to let this board know that I worked over the weekend in drafting the blueprint for the enhanced energy plan. I did copy and pasting from other plans. So I hope that we will have this done much sooner than I asked for the eight-month work plan, but I'm getting it out pretty fast. So Jim, you have that contract in front of you, I guess, too?
We do.
So it's $2,500. We have it in our budget. I would like all of you to be in favor of it, so I do need Barbara Pulling's assistance on it, but I hope to get this done by the end of March. I don't quote me, but I'm hoping by the end of March. The reason for that is because our March 10th meeting, we're having two gentlemen come in from GMP to talk to us about substations and all sorts of very high, above our pay grade explanations about electricity.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So again, I know I asked for eight months, but I know there's some pending projects that are... They have some deadlines, and I will try to get this done by the end of March.
Okay, thank you.
And that being said, it comes to you. And I'll have to explain it to all of you, and then we'll have to link to all of you, and then hopefully you'll sign on line. Okay?
Thank you. Christine?
Christine, I just wanted to approach the board with some of my concerns regarding the election and what could be unfair influences on social media that have been posted in town by some folks. It's bordering on intentional disinformation, if it's not already that. And what's being muttered about is that Joe Bruno, who is running for your seat on the select board, is deemed tavidous as no longer a resident here in Castleton, when he clearly is a resident here in Castleton. So I know that you don't deal with social media and controlling it and so forth, and I understand that. However, this campaign of disinformation against Joe running for select board was initiated by the town manager's wife. And I am the first person to stand up for anybody's right to speak and have their First Amendment right, absolutely 100 percent. What I'm concerned about is the appearance of impropriety and how it may look upon the government and the town manager here in town. And I want to make sure that this election is very fair and that we don't have people that are attached to people in positions of influence here in the town to go about spreading disinformation about another candidate. I mean, it's one thing if you want to support one candidate over another. It's entirely a different issue when you spout negative comments that are not true. And then when you say that the law is on their side, that Joe isn't a resident, and then when they get pushed back, they call it a loophole. And in fact, the person that called it a loophole is the town manager. It's not a loophole. The law is the law. Joe has a home in Castleton. He has a camp in Hubbardin. His primary residence is here. And I really think it's offensive, and I think it's insulting, that a man who has lived in this town for 64 years, his entire life, should have to go out and prove that he's a resident. I mean, there's a lot of older folks that are hearing this information that don't have access to social media and wouldn't know what to do if they didn't have access to it. So they're just taking what they're hearing as gospel because it's coming from somebody that lives in the same home as the town manager. So what I'm asking the board to do is to have the town manager go on these social media platforms, which is Move Castleton Forward on Facebook and on Front porch forum and in the newspaper. Because as I said, there are some folks that are hearing this information and don't know whether it's true or not. And I really do think that it would lose all of you on the board, and especially the town manager, to get out in front of this and clarify what is going on. Because Joe is a resident, and it's unfair that it's almost by proxy that it seems that the town manager is almost in that slander campaign. And I'm not saying that he is, but there's been no denial on social media by Mike stating his neutrality about this. And when he calls it a loophole, it makes it even more muddy for those that are already confused. So I ask you to please take a look at these and get the word out and clarify this, because it's really not fair. It's not fair at all. You know, if you want somebody, that's fine. Do a positive campaign, but don't slander somebody else that's right. Who, by the way, has donated a lot of his time and his services, who's never taken a stipend ever, the whole time he's ever served. And I think an apology is owed to this man. And I think it behooves all of you to clear it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
I just have a question. I don't know if you can answer on the board. Could we be held liable if one of the town officials slanderous? I don't know.
Probably have to get a legal opinion on that one. But the thing, freedom of speech, and sometimes it gets a little foggy.
Can I help off another question?
Sure.
I don't know if it's appropriate, Nedra's in the room. Do you have things in your office where you determine whether to leave a resident or not? Do you make that determination?
When you sign the paper, you swear where you live.
I noticed we have voters that live in Florida and West Virginia. How is that any different? I mean, they have Florida addresses, they have West Virginia addresses. I see numerous ones on the board.
We do have a lot of people who go to Florida on vacation during elections, and that's where they get their ballots forwarded to them, but they have to have a Castleton legal address.
So you have a Castleton legal address regardless of you stay in Florida for 11 and a half months of the year? Does it matter? You see, you can stay down in Florida for 12 months and still be able to vote here? Is that... Is that... That's not... So can you clarify it?
Six months.
Six months away and six months here?
Correct. No, six months, six months plus a day, be considered a resident. That's safe.
So the college kids could vote here?
No, because they're primary resident... Well, because this is an institution and wherever their primary residence is outside here, whatever that could be. They have to change their address.
They have to claim their Castleton is their legal residence.
Okay. Joe?
I just want to make the point that I think this is above my pay grade, and I think it's above most of our pay grades. I think Nedra does have the responsibility to administer the election, so I expect she knows more about this than I do. But I don't think we should be making public statements about what the law is and what we really know what the law is.
That's why I asked Nedra, because I don't know what the law is. I was hoping that Nedra does know what the law is.
Any other citizens' requests? Yes, Christine?
Stephanie's asking, are you suggesting that Joe must prove a negative?
Pardon?
Are you suggesting that Joe must prove this negative statement by the people who are posting that he's not a resident? Is it up to Joe now to prove that he's a resident of this town he's lived in all his life? I guess that's what I'm asking, because there's obviously questions and confusions about all of this.
We have nothing to do with conducting the elections.
Well, again, I go back to the...
And I'm not dodging the issue, I'm just saying...
It's the appearance.
The select board doesn't have anything to do with conducting the elections.
But it's... Okay. It's the appearance of impropriety, and I know that you understand what I'm talking about, and so I'll just say, I'll say it again, until Mike Jones gets on social media platforms and disavows what his wife is saying and the disinformation that she's spreading, the only thing that I can say is that it seems that all of the information coming from his wife is coming from Mike. So I guess we'll just let the voters decide how they want to approach this. I do hope that it's going to be a fair election, but I have my doubts at this point, because I do think that it's being unfairly influenced. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen.
I'd like to say that. My wife, I don't control what she says, I don't tell her what to say, and she said it's not 1950, she doesn't live in the basement anymore, she hasn't an opinion. I've asked her to refrain from posting because it's been contentious, but as far as her opinion goes, I don't influence her opinion, I don't tell her what to say, and I don't tell her what not to say. So if she wants to go out there, Christine, and that's her business. When I went on social media, I actually corrected Zach.
I saw that.
And I said, "Joe is a resident." I never said Joe is not a resident, not once.
You called it a loophole also, Mike.
Well, it's a loophole because... Hold on, let me finish. What happened was people were getting confused between what your residence is and where you live. So there's a difference. You can claim your homestead, and you don't have to live in that residence. So there's a difference between the words, we're mincing some words, is yes, he is a resident, I said that. But does he live at that house? The question was, the way it was posed was, does he live there? Not my business.
So thank you for saying that, because it isn't your business, it's none of my business, it's not your wife's business, where Joe puts his head every night, whether it's in Hubbardin...
Okay, folks, okay, folks. I think we...
Mike responded, I just want to close it out.
Christine, please, Christine.
The gentleman gets $100,000 a year. It's not too unreasonable to think that his wife is going to want to have a friendly select board member here that controls his contract. With that, I'm going to say goodnight.
I don't get $100,000.
Goodnight, Christine.
I'm sure we get paid a lot, Mike.
Thank you for your comments, Christine.
Wife want to pay attention to what you say.
Thank you, Christine. Take advice from...
Any other citizens? Why, this is a calm evening. Shall we move on? Police update, Chief Mantello.
All right. So everybody...
No mass murders that you can top what's been going on so far?
Couple days, I want to go with that. Obviously, you've got the report. We'll look that over, but there's other some stuff here I want to hand out, because I told Bob that I would do this. It's a little cheesy on the describing of... Yes, I need that. I have the wrong...
It's in there. They got it.
They got these?
We have it.
Do I have that?
Yeah, you have it.
It's printed off on the internet, not a typed document.
No, you got this one?
No, no, they got the... She printed out the internet, so whatever.
This is just a synopsis. Let me think that.
Just a lot easier to understand, that's all.
I need that. I don't think I have that. This is the one that she probably gave you, right? This whole thing?
No. It's just...
That thing's even more messed.
Okay, chief, what else do you have?
All right, so...
Thank you, chief.
All right. You looked at the report. I added, there's a couple of things we add in here. Obviously, Mr. Mark wanted us to add some more stuff on here. So if you look at the nature of the calls, calls went up a little bit. Nothing really stands out. Criminal arrests from the previous month, we were down four arrests from 10 to six last month. Traffic violations, if you look the total there, basically the tickets and the warnings and just kind of broke that down. Any questions on that part of the report? If not, if you go to the calls for service to the university, it's pretty consistent. Backup provided by us and the other agencies involved. And those are the... You see the difference between the first page and the second page? Backup provided to, provided by. First page is we provided, and the second page is provided by somebody else.
I'm not really sure what you're talking about, second page. I don't have a second page.
Yeah, I have it, and Zach doesn't have it.
So you don't have this page here?
We don't have the calls for service to the university.
You don't have that?
I'll make copies for the board.
You think we need it, Peter?
Well, you'll need it eventually. There's some disinformation that you guys have requested.
Okay. Well, you got that in the hell box.
What's your last page?
The last page is the employee roster. There's nothing between backup.
Really?
So somebody must... Yeah, you're missing, you're missing like three pages.
And yours are double-sided, mine aren't.
All right, well, I apologize for that.
Just a question about the chief. Does this mean Fairhaven backed up the Castleton 39 times? That's probably your right rate, 6-1, 20-19, 12-13?
Uh, yes.
Does that mean Fairhaven was out here 39 times?
Correct, yes.
In that six-month period?
So in this page, which you didn't see, we had 110 for that same period.
To them.
Correct. That's the page you didn't get. That's the page that Joe Mark wanted to calculate.
Let's not go away from that. Can you explain why there's three times?
You know, outside of going through each of those, I can't answer that. Outside of looking at each, because these are all individual cases, you know, whether... I don't know. I can do some research on it, and we can dig into it a little bit.
I mean, my first instance would be that we have more police officers than they do. That would be my first instance. In other words, we can back them up more than they can back us up. I don't believe they have three times as many calls as we do out here. So I'm just not trying to read into it too much.
No, no, I... When I saw that figure too, I'm like, okay.
Yeah. Now, I don't have that, well, obviously, we don't have 110 calls out there. That's kind of shocking.
And you got the TOED, you got the TOED BACOR report?
Yep.
Cheat sheet.
Yep.
They were collated, they were staggered.
You've got duplicates of some things.
Yep.
So you got that already. This is the same. Did you look at the liquor licensing understanding?
It's the same thing, yeah.
There were five packets.
And we all have, Peter just asked the question, we all have descriptions of what first-class, second-class licenses, that's in our packets.
And you should have those two.
Oh.
There should be two of them in there.
I have that, yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So just to clarify, and I think it's been brought up at past meetings. So when you get liquor licenses, and there's an email sent out to the chief, and Karen's involved, so before it hits these packets, the chief's already seen them. So we wouldn't see him unless he's already said, "Good to go."
She sends them to me all the time.
She responds saying, yeah.
Well, there's a question of whether, if you're not here, whether you approve them or not, but the process is, it goes through its vetting process until it wouldn't make it in the packet if chief didn't already agree with it, correct?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about these. The first and third-class licenses require approval by the locality. There's no indication that that's also the case in the second-class license. Is that just an oversight in the description, or is that a real difference? Maybe someone could investigate.
Chief, he's reading the first paragraph on those, is what he's reading. It's easier to read that, probably.
No, I got this, this is location, license, describes the site of occupation. Requires preapproval of local licensing authority, yes, it does, second-class does.
Second-class does?
Yes. They all do. Now, there's one exception, the third-class license, if they already have a first-class license and they want to serve liquor, they do not have to submit it to the local. They can go directly to DLC.
That has changed this year.
Well, I just got this off this...
That is why I've included that with these now.
Well, because I talked to...
It's changed this year.
Because I talked to Mike, and I said, "That doesn't make sense, Mike." And he explained to me, so maybe it needs to be taken off their website, then.
Because all of the applicants are mailing them directly to the state like they have been in past years.
You mean the third class, just the third?
Just the third. And the state is then turning around and sending it back to me.
Okay.
And I have to bring it before you guys.
So that has changed, so it's all of them.
Just this year.
Anything else, chief?
No, that's it.
Any questions from the board? Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, chief. Next item is second-class license approval, Midway Oil and Prunier's Market.
I'll make a motion.
I assume you have probably reviewed these, chief?
Yes.
No problems?
No problem.
Okay. Zach?
I'll make a motion, we approve a second-class license to sell malt and vinous beverages to Midway Oil.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Zach?
I'll make a motion, we approve the second-class license to sell malt and vinous beverages to Prunier's Market. PFB Inc. doing business as Prunier's Market.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion's approved.
How do we deal with this? Signature of the Select Board member participating electronically.
Guess he'll have to come in and sign it when he returns. That's what you'll have to do, Dick.
Yeah, I can do that next week.
Do we all need to sign, or is it just the majority?
Oh, go ahead and sign. Go on and sign.
Why, you don't want to sign it?
You want to sign it?
No, 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 I don't mind, but I don't see why...
I think four is probably enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if I don't sign it, it'll still be valid.
Yes, it will.
I'm not sure if you were joking or not.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next item. Water source protection plan.
I've had some conversations, the board's own application here. I've had conversations with Chris Creasy from Fire District One about source protection. It was an issue on the wellhead down off Mill Street and the one on the pump house on North Road. But, so, we've had a lot of conversations. Based on those conversations, I actually went and saw Nedra the other day, and I started looking up Dewey Field, because there's always been this wives tale, old wives tale, I thought, that the town didn't own all the property. So Nedra, we went in the vault, and we found a bunch of documents that showed that that would be correct, that a portion of, from the bridge running east across, like if you kind of drew a straight line east, and it crosses over the outfield of the baseball field and the soccer field, that's not owned by the town. And it says in the deed that it was given to the town by the state, it belonged to the... What's the name of the school, the...
Village School?
No, the university's name was called something school.
Normal School.
Normal School.
Normal School, yeah.
Anyway, it was for the purpose of recreation. So Chris came to me, and they're worried about the protection of the wellhead and over the aquifer down there, and they gave me some documents showing what the state, what the state says about source protection. And part of that area, what I'm saying, is not under the town's jurisdiction. It kind of, that buffer zone that they're talking about goes outside of ours. So that would be something that they'd have to likely deal with, the landowner, and we've got the name now, at least what's in the deed. But with the threat, and I gave you guys, I think, last meeting, the PFAS, the threat of the PFAS and how it impacts drinking water, when I hear something that says it's, they measure it in parts per trillion, and 20 parts per trillion, that's a red flag, because usually things are in parts per billion. So they're really scrutinizing this thing. So I asked Chris if he would come in and talk to the board about what they're asking for support from the town as they pursue protecting the town's water source. So, and he's got Carrie with him as well, Carrie Fowler.
Okay, Chris, or Carrie?
We had to do a test for polymeral alkyl substances within the water system at the wellhead. And the test is for 20 parts per trillion. That is the equivalent of one second in 32,000 years, one inch and 16 million miles, one drop of water in 660 rail tank cars. I think it's incredible that they could find it in that kind of a range. That is a substance... We have substances that can be within the water district, the source protection area, but the ground kind of takes care of itself. The flora and fauna and everything and some bugs eat it up. This stuff stays, and it accumulates. The stuff that it can cause is ulcerative colitis, liver damage, abnormal fat metabolism, high cholesterol, kidney cancer, chronic kidney cancer disease, cardiovascular system, high blood pressure in pregnant women. And it doesn't take very much to do it. This material that we're talking about that causes this damage, it's in grease-resistant paper, fast-food containers, wrappers, microwave popcorn bags, pizza boxes, and candy wrappers. It's in stain-resistant coatings used on carpets, upholstery, and other fabrics. It's in water-resistant clothing, it's used in cleaning products, it's used in personal care products like shampoo, dental floss, and cosmetics, nail polish, it's in paints, varnishes, and sealants. It's also on motorcycles, and it's in cars. I looked up on the Internet and got some other uses of this material. They use it at airports when there's going to be a plane crash. It's a flame retardant, it's used in waxes, adhesives, pesticides, leather, fertilizers used in farming, and polish. Now, some of this I got off the Internet, I'm not sure how all of it is free, but it is absolutely ubiquitous, and it hurts in very small quantities, and it doesn't go away by itself. So when we took the samples for that test, we had some instructions from the state. He had to wash all his clothes three times, and he couldn't use soap on the last washing. What were his other things?
He had to shower three times, no deodorant.
He had to take a shower, he couldn't use aftershave lotion, nor could he use a deodorant. And when he packed up the boxes to send them, he had to pre-bag them with three bags.
Even the ice to keep the sample cold had to be triple-bagged. So it's, you know, when you're getting parts for a trillion, I mean, it's a pretty tough thing to get the samples. Everything came back good, which is what we were banking on. But what we're looking at now is to try to maintain the clearance around both the North Road well and Mill Street. Where here, you know, with North Road, the town owns the majority of the property we're looking at. So this one, we think, will be kind of easy, even, you know, even if the town doesn't want to part with some of it, at least, you know, you gentlemen can kind of help control it for us. If you want the Mill Street, that's going to be a little more tricky, and that's our next step to work on that well.
What this means is when you walk through the source protection area, you're carrying the stuff on your clothes. If you use a deodorant, you're carrying it, if you used aftershave, you're carrying it. So what we want to do is limit the access within the area where some damage can be done. Now, the state has, not a rule, but they'd like you to have 200 feet from the actual wellhead. Right now, there, we have approximately 75 feet, not 200 feet. So what I'd like to do is ban all activity within a 200-foot area, except for where the road is and where the cars park, and put up some signs, and I'd also like to have a fine if you disobey it. Okay? What I have found is, when I did the source protection plan, we had five breaches of the source protection area between the two wells, okay? And that was in a two-month period. I think with this kind of material floating in the ground, that we can't afford that anymore. The way you would get rid of it, there is a way to get rid of this stuff, to take it out of the water. They've taken it out of the water... I don't know where the sheet of paper is. They've taken it out of the water on an Air Force Base over on the other side of the state. Bennington has showed up with this in their wells, but also in their house water, where private wells are. So it's been showing up, and someplace north of here, I can't remember the name of the town, it started to show up, I think where they train the firemen. So what I'm trying to do is just protect that area. What we would have to do, if we came down with this, is we'd have to put three 15-foot tanks in with probably 10-foot diameters. We'd have to load one of them up with carbon, we'd have to load one up with another manufactured material, and we might have to use a second type of carbon, okay? We would have to pump all of the water through those before we chlorinate and into the system to get it out. Now that we've got those containers full of poison for people, we'd have to backwash them and get rid of the material and the PFOS in it. There are some wastewater systems that can take it out, and there are some that can't. I don't know what the requirements are to take it out in the wastewater system, okay? I can find out. But what it amounts to, we'd be stuck with all of this poison, okay? And nobody's going to want to put it on their land or anywhere else. So I think the smartest thing to do is just keep people out of the area. My understanding is now, and I got this from the Internet, it might not be true, is some pesticides have this material in them that farmers use. So that now puts a question on us for the well over by Mill Street, across the bridge. I have been working with the engineer on that. We have a bridge there that we go across, that the abutments of the bridge are starting to wind up in the river. And we've now got a weight limit on it, okay? If anything happened to that bridge, we are landlocked, so I will be coming back to the town, talking to them about a possibility of getting a right-of-way into that well.
Where would it be from, Chris? Where would it be from? Where would the right-of-way be from?
Right now, we got the temporary right-of-ways when we were putting the new well pumps in a couple years ago. We came across from North Road, across Tim Colvin's piece of land there that he wants to sell, down into what was Pelleteer's land.
Well, it's a wet area. I wouldn't call it a wet land.
And then it crossed, skirted around the edge of their, the meadow, you know, along by the river to get there in there with the crane. But of course, now, Dave Wiesel owns that now, and that's where we've got to see if we can work with him. Because the drawing we have on the Mill Street property is, we're only 19 and a half feet away from the well, is where the property we own right now. So we've got to try to work on something there. And then, of course, with, you know, with all the PFOS and everything else, I mean, the other thing we're looking at is just, you know, having vehicles parked there. I mean, you know, gas and whatnot would be a big problem, and it's something that could be, you know, cleaned up and taken care of, as opposed to this stuff. But, I mean, we're just looking at trying to keep the traffic away and everything else of, you know, the area.
What would be the impact on Dewey Field for recreational purposes?
I've been working with the town manager on that. You have a road on one side, what he wants to continue to have, he has parking on the other side, and my guess is what I would like is up to the road, and then a circle around.
Look at the map, so if you're looking at your map, it shows the wellhouse, you're coming in, this is North Road, as you come in, you turn off North Road into the facility, there's a parking area on the right-hand side, it's kind of a lighter shaded area. The 200-foot boundary cuts across that. When I'm, I don't know if you can see what I'm doing, but what I'm saying is, if he does the 200, comes down to the road and just parallels the road back to... is if he does the 200, comes down to the road and just parallels the road back to North Road, that way cars and stuff can't park here, but we still have parking area over, well over 75 feet away, for, because we're still using it for sports with baseball teams and soccer.
You know, some, some stuff, like the nitrates, you have, the bugs take care of it in the water and stuff, on this stuff, it's not taken care of when it accumulates. And it's in your clothing, it's in what you're carrying, the bag, that you have the sports stuff in. I'd kinda like to get people out of there. I think 20 points per trillion is...
The scary part of the whole thing is, is how many food containers and everything else that we eat, the stuff is in. But, when it gets into water, then we're...
Is this something you're working on with Mike?
Yes.
That's what's happening? Okay.
Mike's aware of what we're doing and what we'd like to do, and he had me draw up the map and stuff. So, I would like to deal, continue to deal with Mike.
Fine. I don't know, does anyone has any objections to that?
No, no, I just had a couple of questions. I mean, this is, this is a ridiculous question, but how do you control what comes down the river? The river goes right through that 200-foot?
I know. Listen, I know that, but the rules are the rules, and if we ever get a hit, the cost, I'm, I'm telling you, the cost would be enormous to clean it up. So, I think an ounce of protection is...
Oh, absolutely, I'm not against it, I'm just, it was just a philosophical question.
Yeah, I know, the river goes right by here.
You realize what goes down to that river? I grew up on the Milky River, so I know.
Chris, you're, you're referring to fines from, you're referring to fines from the state if the allowable contamination is exceeded?
We can't, we can't levy fines.
I know, no, that, no, I didn't tell you.
No, I'm saying the state, the state fining the fire district.
No, the, the...
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, I'll tell you what happened, and this is one of the things that bothers me. What's the name of, Flint, Michigan?
Yeah.
He couldn't pay for the water, he brought water in from another source that had lead, right?
Yeah.
He got a jail term. Okay, so I'm laying this in your lap, so you and the guys that are in jail, not me.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
You're so considerate.
Just wanna share things, right?
No, no, the, the state can fine us, yes. If we don't, if we don't comply. The first phone call I had with the state was from Tim Raymond. I had just joined the water board, and he said, "You don't meet the state's specifications. What I need to see is somebody figuring out a way to meet the specifications, borrowing the money and getting it done, and if you don't, the fine is gonna be $1,000 a day." That was my first phone call, and at that time, our budget was only $80,000. We now have, we fixed the system. My problem financially is that about a third of the water bill is to pay off the loans we make, we got to make the system adequate for the state requirements, okay? And I'm not sure we should be taking out any more loans. We, we've set up a reserve account now, I have a pipe from the reservoir down the main street that is almost, not quite, almost 100 years old. And it runs red, and that gives you problems with coliform and other stuff. That's the next project, I'm waiting now to hear if they're gonna give us a grant. The town has an under-average median household income, which means we can get a grant for part of it. I think I have enough in the reserve to replace that pipe now, but I do not wanna borrow any more money.
Okay, any other questions? Joe?
Chris, is there any thought being given to acquiring the land that you really need to be able to control the SPA?
Yes.
I think there's a state program.
The state has a program, I haven't brought it up because I don't know what the rules are, okay? It might be they'll give us a grant for 20% of it or all of it, but they'll also put up signs, they'll also get grants for other things. My problem is, I don't know how they work and I've been asking now, I'm gonna be going up to see them.
Anything else?
I just, I had a quick question. Where is the runoff coming down from the college that goes across your property? Where is that dumped into, Chris?
That comes right through the property.
Comes through your property, where does it dump into?
It dumps into railroad tracks.
Into the rail tracks?
Yeah, and then it dumps into the river.
So, it's only across that?
No, it's, it's west of there.
There's a berm there, there's a rail berm, and there's a...
A ditch there goes into, then it goes across North Road and in, so it's beyond us when it goes back into there.
Oh, okay, yeah, diverted past North Road before it goes...
The west into the river, okay, okay.
Just so you know, the one that, that is, we're trying to replace, is the one that comes from Seminary Street, goes underneath Route 4A, behind the village school and daylights, just before it hits the railroad tracks. Now, that, when it dumps in there, just infiltrates into the ground, the railroad tracks, you know, is a, is a natural barrier for it to just flow, but it goes into the ground though.
So, you don't think it goes under the ground on the three...
Water infiltrates, water infiltrates.
They're monitoring wells in there.
One good thing we have is we have two wells, one is on one side of the river, the other well is on the other side of the river, okay? Now, I have been told by Tim Raymond, who's a hydrologist, that those are separate aquifers. I disagree with him, I think it's all one big aquifer. So, we are working on it, trying to be sure we're protected and to improve things, but we need a little help from the town.
All right, and you'll work with Mike to indicate what you need from the town? Will that be helpful?
Then, then I'll come back to the board with whatever the findings are.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Oh, I enjoyed it no end.
Good, Chris.
Such fun.
Okay, moving on, tax sale list for approval.
This list, I sat down with Margaret, went over it, asked her questions. We did put an asterisk there, I asked her to put it there, and at the very end, it says, "Property owners that have had a partial payment agreement in the past, but they've defaulted on their impartial payment agreement." So, that's what the asterisk means. So, these all meet the criteria of the new tax sale policy that the board passed, so it's anything over $500 in the, in prior year, prior year of $500, so. We, we were really, actually, last year, we ended up with three properties at the very end, and everybody paid it off. We picked up a lot of tax, back tax revenue by having the tax sale list out there and following through with it, rather than just threatening. I mean, I think the town has done pretty well by, by the residents trying to encourage them to go on a partial payment if they're behind, which folks have done. But, this is the list that would, if you approve, that we would pursue for this year.
Don't answer this, if you can't, quit about it. What is the exact procedure when we approve this, then what do you do?
Then the attorney gets involved and we start doing research and, we got 30 days and the letter's gotta go out to the individuals, and it...
What does the letter say, Mike?
Basically, they're behind and it says, "If you come in before this date and enter into a partial payment agreement, your name would come off the tax sale list, or if you come in and pay it, your name would come off it."
Good. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I did have a question.
Question, go ahead.
So, the asterisks means they had a partial payment agreement in the past, but don't have one effective currently, is that right?
Well, it means they defaulted on it.
Okay.
Okay, I would just, how do we tell if any of these have an agreement or they don't?
No, no, if they have an agreement, they're not on here, unless, unless they defaulted on it. So, the asterisk, asterisk represents those folks.
Okay, okay.
So, my question is, let's just say the first person on this list comes back in and wants to do a payment plan, does he come off the list? Because he has...
They would come off the tax sale list if they enter into an agreement with us.
But even though he's previously defaulted on a payment plan, he still comes off the list?
No, this doesn't include those that defaulted.
Okay, but, okay, that's what I was...
Yeah, 'cause he said the first name on the list.
Right. And he's, okay, so then...
The asterisk, so they can't come in again and do the...
They're, they're, they're on one now that they haven't paid, they defaulted on it.
So, then they stay on the list, even if they come back in and wanna go back on a payment?
Unless they paid it all off.
Right, okay, that's what I was getting at.
Are we ready for a motion, gentlemen? No.
Yep.
What's the motion?
I make a motion, we accept the proposed tax sale list as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion is unanimously, approved unanimously. I believe the next one is a, a mistake, reappointments of appointed officials. I believe that would be done by the new board after the election.
Yeah, Karen put it on here because she saw the one March, they expired on one March, and she said, "Well, that's before the next board will be in here," so that's why she put it here, whatever the board's pleasure.
We don't have any pleasure, the next board, the new board will do it.
They just, they just, it would be from one March to whenever they're reappointed, we just would have no appointments at that period, they expire on one March.
Why do we have to have one March? Why couldn't we do March 15th? So, we don't go through this every year?
I think that that would be probably a prudent decision. I don't think it has to do anything with, because if you read the, the appointments, it says, "Once the new board is formed." So, March 1st is kind of a premature, I think. So, we can change that going forward.
Okay, next item is Recreation Commission, a letter of intent and appointment. We have a letter from Eliza LeBrun. Someone care to make a motion to serve on the Recreation Commission?
I'll make a motion that we accept this letter of consideration from Eliza LeBrun and appoint her to the Recreation Commission.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, motion to second, any discussion? Is it a term? What's the term?
Uh, yeah, what is the term?
Anybody know what the term is supposed to be?
I don't know.
One year, dude.
Don't know, Eliza? Okay.
I think they're all, aren't they all under there?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
How about to, to approve it subject to the, whatever, whatever the vacancy is?
Right, exactly.
Okay? Appropriate term.
I'll amend that.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Yeah, a second.
A second, okay, discussion? All those who approve, say so, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, all five. Abandoned property, legal assistance. Mike?
These properties were something that Mary Jo found, and she's worked with Nedra and, and Margaret, and they've exhausted their means to find out who actually owns these properties. So, what I'd like to do is put a bid out to get an attorney to start doing the research on this, 'cause we're at, we're at a, we're at a standstill at this point. Be nice to know, actually, who owns the property, and then try to find the, the owner and find out what's going on and, 'cause the, they, the stuff that they found in our records, they can't get ahold of anybody that's on that, previous owners.
So, you're looking for approval to get some legal opinion, get a legal opinion on this? Is there a motion?
So...
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just want a quick question. Any reason why the listers decided to put it back on the tax roll, what purpose is that?
They didn't know.
They think somebody was gonna come forward?
I asked, they're not here anymore, so when I asked Mary Jo, they don't really have a, a logical reason why it would go back on there.
I had to ask.
Okay, Joe?
I had a question as well about the last paragraph on the second page, where you say that the longer these two parcels are on the delinquent list, the more interest they accrue. It seems odd to me that we are racking up interest on tax debts for owners whom we don't know, can't find, don't have a mailing address for. I, I, it, it just, I don't know whether we have this option, but I think in, in a case such as this, I would be inclined to, to kind of freeze a bill, you know, add the annual increments perhaps, but not interest on that. It just doesn't seem sensible to me.
But, we're basically loaning those property owners, whoever they may be, we're basically loaning them money, we're fronting them the money. So, doesn't money, isn't there a cost to money, being an interest rate?
It is, that's a good point. We, we've, we've done this in the past, where somebody comes in and says, "Oh, my God, that was my great-great-grandmother's property," and they settle up a tax bill, and we, we work, I work with them, and a lot of times, we don't charge them the interest 'cause they didn't know about it. So, in good faith, we said, "You weren't trying to avoid us, you didn't know it existed."
But they pay the whole amount, they pay the whole amount, that's all.
Yeah, they look back, there was back taxes on it. I mean, I, I've never found one that was like, in the two years I've been here, it was like for 10 years or something, so, it's been short increments.
You ready for the question, gentlemen? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You an aye, Dick? Are you aye, Dick? You're aye, okay. Motion passes. Crystal Beach Tractor Bid Award, Mike?
So, you have, we had three bidders on the tractor that you, that board had approved money, it was $10,000 that the board approved for, toward, toward the purchase of a compact mower tractor at Crystal Beach. This, if you look through it, has a front-end loader, has a landscape rate for the beach and a mower deck. So, I learned more about compact utility mowers than I ever wanna know about, and what I can, my recommendation is that we go with the Kubota. Massey Ferguson is the cheaper, but they're in London area, or South London area, and they only have a 12-month on the implements, 24 months on the, or 2,000 hours on their warranty, where Kubota has two years on implements, three years on the powertrain and the labor, and they, they'll pick up and transport it for nothing. It's in Pittsburgh, and then obviously, John Deere, what typically is a higher-end tractor, it's more money. I'm recommending that, that we, that we get the Kubota, it's a local dealership, we get a better warranty, and they transport for free.
Okay, you've heard the manager's recommendation, is there a motion?
I make the motion, we award the bid to Townline Equipment Sales for a Kubota tractor for the, for Crystal Beach.
You mount?
Oh, I'm sorry, in the amount of $16,070.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a discussion for you, I'll just, they, they have $10,000 that was in the carryover money, and they need to use the other money from their reserve, so I don't know if you need to make a second or separate motion for that.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Time to post the town roads.
You did say it comes out of the rec, rec departments.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. County has some public notice to post the roads. You have any comment on that, Mike?
No, it's just the same that we do every year, you know, that it's up to us whether they, we end up posting or not, depending on the, the weather, but it's better to get it all done and have it in our pocket than not have it in our pocket.
Okay, motion on that?
Make the motion, we post the roads.
Post the roads as of the 24th of February?
Yeah, as of today.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion, I just had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Doesn't this normally have on there, this, this not to include emergency vehicles or fuel-carrying vehicles? Usually, I've seen these, there is some exceptions, I was saying...
We did, when I read on it, there was some stuff on there, emergency vehicles and some, but it says, so this says, it's authorized under that Title 19 VSA 1109, 1110, that's when we read this. I thought she put that in there. There was a copy of the statute that talked about emergency vehicles and things like that, so it, it would, that's what, it says right here, establishment, these temporary restrictions are provided by Rule 118. So, when she, when she gave that to me, there was a clause in there about the emergency vehicles and delivery-type vehicles.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Off-road diesel award, we have three bids here, Champlain Valley... Champlain Valley, 195 a gallon. Sam's U-Save, 208 a gallon. Local Fuels, 215 a gallon. Is there a motion?
Oh, it's in here, okay. We're getting 3,000 gallons, is it?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we award the bid for off-road diesel to Champlain Valley Fuels in the amount of 195 a gallon, $1.95 a gallon for 3,000 gallons of fuel, and that number, the final total is, where? That's Sam's. No, I know I saw it.
There's a $1.95 a gallon.
$1,030, isn't that right there?
Oh, yeah, okay, so they didn't put a. I'll put the, do the calculation right now.
What are you looking for, the amount? The number of gallons?
For a total amount?
3,000, but.
3,000?
The dollar value of the contract.
Okay.
For amount, for an amount not to exceed $5,850.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, motion to second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain or refuse my.
Okay.
Refuse myself?
Okay.
What is the, what is the, what is the, abstain or refuse?
Recuse.
Oh, so you can't say abstain?
Yeah. Okay, yes, somebody has something?
I thought they were interchangeable, those terms.
Yeah, they're not exactly interchangeable, but simply for the purpose of a vote like this, they're interchangeable. Recuse would mean you choose not to participate in the discussion or the vote. Abstain is you simply don't vote.
Okay.
Okay.
I refuse myself.
Okay, the website overhaul, Civic Plus, Mike?
Civic Plus is the company we're using now. And anybody that's used our website knows how clunky it is, and just the even post stuff, it's just not, it's not very user-friendly. So a couple of years ago, when I got here, the employees were talking about it, and I've, talking with like the Jonas and Planning Commission Janet Curry, and now the Economic Development Board, to come up with a, to revamp our website so it's user-friendly. We have a site on there, if someone's looking for information about the town, they want to move here. We just, we have, it's easier to use and there's more information. So it's $5,500. I asked Karen to talk to them about, is this a, like an update, or is this like an overhaul? And this was an overhaul. So what I wanted to do was come up with some ideas, and come up, come back to the board with those ideas. But to move forward, I'd ask that you approve it. And between the town office building and managing municipalities is the budget lines that would come out of. And we can get something that's a little bit more 21st century.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
To me, that bid seems kind of high for a website rebuild. I don't know if you want to get more bids before we go forth with this, but.
I would personally not, because they're the ones that have done ours now. So to be able to transition things, it'd just be so much easier to use somebody that already has, knows the infrastructure now. But that's, I don't think that was high, because we did at one point have a bid. And that's why I came back this one, said, is this overhaul too, like redoing it? And the answer was, they would honor that, because it was an older bid from two years ago.
The reason why I thought that was high was because for our business, we're looking at redoing our website. And I mean, I've seen quotes from $4,000 for a premium website down to, what? Maybe 2,000 being the lowest. You know, for a functional, mobile-friendly website.
I don't, I'm not disputing that, Zach. And this also includes the training for the staff on how to use it and everything too.
And is there a monthly fee for web services?
No, we pay as we go right now. If we need something, we paid them an annual.
So there's no monthly fee?
Right.
For, okay, for web hosting?
Right.
Okay, okay, okay.
I may share your views, Zach, and I guess one thought I have is that it'd be interesting to identify one or two town websites that you think are really stellar, and find out who did them and what they paid.
Okay.
This could be twice as high as it needs to be.
I have identified those, Joe, and being the, out of the ones I've looked at, that was the, what I would, I would say I would like to emulate kind of thing, but.
Great.
But I can, I can contact them.
Let's do some more homework before we.
Yep.
Okay, so you want to hold off on this? Okay.
Table this for the next meeting?
Or to the point at which Mike is ready to come back to us with his final recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay. Rutland Regional Planning Commission, planning services, enhanced energy plan, that's what Janet was commenting on tonight.
I have one question about this, which is basic. Once an enhanced energy plan, why do we need?
Was she briefed last time? It was, so it brings them to the table with like Green Mountain Power, and we have a seat at the table when talking about solar projects, and it brings it, it has to be tied into the community, the three village designated centers, it has to be tied into that. And that's why Rutland Regional Planning Commission was asked to get involved, because they did all the work on, or they do all the work. They helped Janet and the planning commission on the new town plan and the village designated centers. So what does it actually get for us, besides a seat at the table and say? I mean, one of the things I talked to Janet about was like that project up on Sand Hill Road, that 2.2 megawatt array. They don't follow the same rules as the smaller guys. So she said to me the other day, she's like, there, it's possible we can't do a damn thing about it. Because they, the way that they go through the process versus 150 kilowatt arrays, with their certificate of public good and all that kind of stuff, so.
Are you saying that having an enhanced energy plan would have given us more leverage in that situation?
Not for that situation, but in solar projects overall. And one of the things that, when she's, because I brought up a concern, you guys know I did, about eight month, an eight-month period, and she addressed it tonight, that doesn't look like it'd be eight months. Because the substations have capacity. Fairhaven has two, MHG Solar, the ones that wanted to put in the two projects here, they have two projects going on in Fairhaven. And we're being told, and this is what Janet's going to confirm, is we're being told that's going to come off that Hyattville substation. At the leg that goes to where those are. So if people in town in Castleton wanted to have, put in a solar array, and they want to get lease money and help themselves out, they potentially wouldn't be able to do it once that capacity is used up, and it gets used up by someone who doesn't live in Castleton. So that was why I was talking to you guys about the 11, or the eight months of being a long time, because MHG is on the books for these two projects. And Janet knows that, we've spoken about it, she's working on it, so.
Any other questions?
Where are the funds for this?
They had, you guys already approved, I believe, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to do the work.
I think we did.
For the municipal planning grant. So this money right here is addition to that, and they have it in their operating budget to pay for the $2,500.
Okay, are you ready for our motion? Is there a motion on this?
I move we authorize the chair to approve our participation in a grant agreement with Rutland Regional Planning Commission, purpose of developing an enhanced energy plan.
Just a second.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Managers update. Have you already given it, Mike?
No, well, probably a lot of it, yeah. One of the big things that, I want to, I just want to take a second to talk about is the project, on the project updates under number one. So I did talk to Lois Baldwin, and I talked to Pete Dice from MHG Solar about the solar array up behind on the gravel pit. So minus a drawing right now of this, the area, and how this would be impacted on our property, where transmission would come through. I've talked to Lois, we pretty much have agreed with what, her, let me back up. Her reservations on some of those things, we've addressed. Between myself, Pete, and her, we've had this conversation that the town's not in any kind of liability, and she would be willing to put her letter in, her stamp of approval. I just need to get that drawing to give to her so she can make that. And then barring that, would be signing the solar agreement with MHG to move forward with the project. Because time's a-ticking now with summer coming, because we have to get the gravel out of the ground before the solar array goes on. And if we try to wait another year, they're not going to do it, they're going to move on from us.
Okay. Anything you need action on that we can't read?
Not on page one. On page two, you've already approved the engineering study, so that's good. You already did the Kubota tractors, so that's done on page, on the second page there, number five. Highway Department, really nothing. And the clock tower, so I have a call into Mariclock, I called them on Friday. I've reset this thing as many times as I possibly could, and it doesn't change anything. So I called Mariclock, and they didn't call me back today, but I'll follow up with them to find out, because there's a three-year warranty on the clock. But that runs out in June. So I need an answer on like why the clock's malfunctioning. Because the times all, and the date are all correct, the year, date, month, everything's correct. And Joe Bruno stopped in today to look at it, and, but I've, I'll find out from Mariclock.
Is the time zone correct?
I have a spot for time zone.
This is going back, Mike, but I wanted to ask about the, your second half of your first paragraph here on page one, where you say it might be worth having a conversation with adjoining property owners to vein their gravel.
Yes.
What's the economics of that? Is it much cheaper for us to get our own gravel locally than to buy it?
It is. I sat down with Paul today, we actually ran those numbers on what it, for us to crush it, the cost of us crushing it versus the cost of purchasing it, it is cheaper. One of the things I did ask him is I said, why can't, can we crush three-eighths inch clean stone? Because we just bought it to add into the highway salt? Like, why can't we crush our own? It's just, it's how it's filtered and screened, right? So that's something that we talked about today, because, but there is a, there is a cost benefit that would, as long as we can get a geologist or somebody to say that that adjoining property is got a good, how long does that vein of gravel keep going there? Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Mike?
Unless you have any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions for Mike?
No.
Seeing none, okay. Move on to Select Board Comments and Concerns. Bob?
Yeah.
Okay.
Putting out the wastewater treatment facility dumpster, maybe better than two times to that.
The last time I inquired on that, when you asked, I was told that it was because of, because they're putting hazardous materials in there, and that's why it costs more. Because they're putting all the waste stuff in there that, so that's the answer I got.
That's fine, but I'd like some documentation on that, like.
It's like.
I was in the business for 35 years, I went and picked up basically raw sewage from a place. And yes, you have to treat it a little separately, but it's just regular bag trash in that dumpster, and I think it's probably, a lot of it's coming from our employees. I'm not saying all of it, but.
They're putting, there is a waste, some of the, I don't want to say tailings, I know it's not called tailings, but.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Would you just look into that?
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, I did before, but I, that's the answer I got, but I'll dig some deeper, I'll dig deeper.
I mean, it's over, it's well over two, it's almost twice as much as $2,000, and it isn't over $2,000 supposed to be put out the bid.
Yeah, and I don't know how it was, because that's been there since I got here, so.
Yeah, I know. And I'm not blaming you for the past, I'm just trying to tighten up on some of this stuff.
Next, Bob?
Mr. Chairman, aye?
Yes, Dick? Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, are you talking about the same topic the, these two guys are?
Specific to about, I have a question. It's either for Bob or for Mike or both, is what are we putting in that dumpster that we couldn't have our town employees put in our own transfer station?
Mike, that's, the stuff I got, Dick, was that the hazardous waste, you know, it's considered biohazard. So that's what is household garbage, they bring to the transfer station.
Okay. All right, then I'll yield to Bob, and we need to find out what the deal is there. Okay?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I just want to express my disappointment in the Slate Valley Unified District having a meeting the same amount as ours. I mean, that's, that was poor planning. And then the three-inch stone that we bought, I don't want to mention the person we bought it from. Did that get put out the bid?
We did, there was three, we gave you guys.
Did we do that?
Yeah.
I have just a question, I don't remember.
Yeah, because it was N N N being the one over in, on, toward Ira. The plant, that's where they picked it up. It wasn't local. We went local, and they couldn't provide stuff without fines in it. And they didn't.
I don't remember seeing Carreras, I mean Carreras deals in this stuff, big guy, I just.
There was one, because they were looking at limestone, because the Hubbardan purchases, one of the towns purchased limestone from Almia.
And I have one other thing, did you happen to come up with the dollar figure in the formula? Use to determine the charge to Hubbardan?
It's in the packet.
It is?
It's, it's a.
Is it in your analysis there?
No, it was one of.
You got the 20, but how did you come up with that?
This is something that I, no, it's not it. Hold on.
It's something Melanie does.
Well, this is something that, when I asked Melanie about it, it's, this was something that was designed a while ago, and she couldn't recall like how it came up with that assessment. There's a, the separate packet I gave you guys had a very front page of it.
That the one, that the one sheet, one sheet?
I got so many pieces of paper right now.
From this one, Mike?
Yes, that one.
Okay, I think I have that.
Got that, okay.
It's stapled, it's stapled together.
Y'all set then, Bob?
Yeah, I think so.
Joe?
Yep, I'm set.
Doc?
I'm all set.
Dick, Dick, you're absent, you're not on the screen.
No, I had to, some, someone.
Hello?
Select Board Comments.
Car 54, where are you?
Here, did you see me?
Do you have any, yes, you're all set now. Do you have any questions or concerns? Under Select Board Concerns? No, you're all set?
I do.
You do? Well, you do or you don't?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not have Select Board Comments.
You're cutting it out of this, Dick, you're cutting it out, we're getting every other word.
Okay. I don't have any. Warrants for approval. Who'd like to do the honors?
Oh, boy. All right. Motion we approve warrant number 0224 in the amount of $43,897.82. Warrant number 0220 for $6,065.77. Warrant number 0213 for $31,925.22. Warrant number 0220P for $16,257.97. And warrant number 0213P for $17,693.55.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimously. Okay, we have two more, Zach.
Yes.
Chairman, I'll refuse myself?
Yes, okay. Dick recuses himself, Eliza?
I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number 0221P for $678.15. And warrant number 0214P for $678.15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. We have one other. The Belden Company, sidewalk project.
Yeah, and I'll make a motion, we approve purchase order number 044534 to Belden Company for the balance of additional days worked in regards to the sidewalk project from Drake Road to Hydeville Plaza, in the amount of $5,770.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this one?
Just an explanation from the project manager.
Sure.
Yep, so the Beldens had additional days, most of it attributed to the arguments that happened over the sidewalks, like Donnie Ducharme, they had to, we had to bring down people to, a surveyor again, we had to bring back and look at Tom, Rob Steele's place out in front of Tom Bait and Tackle, we had wasted days down at the Hydeville Plaza when work couldn't be done until things were resolved through attorneys, so there was additional days. This got vetted through. All right, Dick?
You okay, Dick?
Yeah, I'm here.
The, just fixing, just fixing the roof. But, so that was vetted, vetted through our municipal project manager and through VHB, so we, we looked at this thing front and backwards to make sure that everything was accurate. And that, that's their final, that's Belden's final thing. We have another one coming from VHB for their additional days, because they had to be on site when Belden's on site, so that one's still forthcoming.
Don't they still plan to grind down?
They did.
Something, that's all done? Oh, okay.
The, the punch list stuff right now, there's, they got a fix in front of the, the Green Mountain Church of Christ, the water problem there, and that's really, that's pretty much it left on the punch list. We, as a town, we put the grass seed down, and the top's lawn grass seed down by Joe Sessok's place in front of Slate Valley PT, but we're going to go back in the spring to, to put that back down again.
Okay.
But.
Any other questions on this purchase order? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay for me, please.
Nay for you, okay.
Just sign where Dick's supposed to sign, is that going to make a big difference? Can we cross it out, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, just, he's just lying through it, initial it, and then sign it where you're supposed to.
That's right here.
Oh, oh, no.
Oh, the other, okay, yeah, okay, all right.
I don't know, that's kind of what I'm asking.
They've got the stamp.
I gave you the original, yeah.
I see a red stamp.
They're never stapled together on this, though, right?
No.
I didn't think so either, that's what I'm saying, something different here.
Yeah, it is. Alec, Alec is doing it, and Melanie's not here, that's all.
Yeah, that's my, doesn't even differ, I may have missed a spot, so.
Yeah, double check it.
I missed that, yep.
I'll look through it at the end.
Yeah, you're going to have to, Dick, I may have missed one. Good luck, Joe.
Thank you. It's like I'm going to need it, I'm going to watch it here.
I missed that spot, yeah. See, I knew it.
Some ways having them all together is helpful.
It, it kind of is.
I'm actually surprised, Dick, that the internet's held up as well as a house.
Yeah, this one here's been fine.
That's the best he's signed them all in right there.
Yeah.
It is.
Really?
Yeah, you've been in and out.
How's the weather?
It's a good thing.
There you go.
Gorgeous. I'm sitting here in shorts and a t-shirt, it's around 75 degrees out right now, the high today was right around 80.
Hmm, okay, that's enough.
We had about 50, 55.
That's enough.
Well, hey, you know, I'll be happy with 55 when I get home, that'd be a good day.
When are you getting back?
Uh, we get back Friday evening.
Okay.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Okay, while Zach is finishing that up.
These are extras.
Is there a, a need for a recap or follow-up?
I'm good.
Bob's? All set?
Yeah.
Joe?
I'm fine.
Zach, I guess we're all set.
I just want to, the, the agreement with Green Lantern for that, the, the two issues that you guys found, one is on the termination, it didn't say days, so they, I've got it here, it says days now, and under Exhibit B, it was 95 or 90, Joe found that, it's now reads both 90% and the words 90 in writing, so if you're good with that, I am going to sign that.
Sounds good. That was a, that addresses the questions that were brought up.
Yes.
Do you have seven?
I got the other one. What do you need?
Six.
Yeah.
Seven.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Zach. Any reason for executive session, Mike?
Yeah, person, uh, contracts.
Why should we go into, oh, God, excuse me. Make a motion, we go into executive session for contracts?
At?
At 8:42.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.